It is 7:00 PM, so I want to call to order the meeting of the MRMAC Planning Board for Tuesday, February 15th, 2022. Let's begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, let's see. Let's do our usual announcements. Anybody that's going to address the board at the table in front, make sure the microphone's turned on and that light is bright green. Speak clearly into the microphone and make sure the folks at the home can hear you. Please also make sure you identify yourself for the record so that the minute taker can get your name. Our next Planning Board meeting after tonight is currently scheduled for March 1st, 2022, at 7:00 PM in the Matthew Thornton Room. Let's see, Nelson, you're an alternate, so let's put you in for a voting position. I think Lynn is not here, so you can be in Lynn's voting position tonight. For the benefit of the folks in attendance, if anybody is here interested in item number three or item number five, I would expect that the board would approve continuances that have been requested in those items. I don't know if the crowd's going to thin out any at all, but so be it. There's the announcement. Let's see, that's all of the announcements that I have. Let's see, Robert, is there a Planning and Zoning Administrators Report tonight?
I do not have one, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Robert. Members of the board, are there any questions for Robert on any matter? All right, let's move ahead to item three on our agenda. And this is on our agenda, that's getting echoey. Continued review for a conditional use permit for a Level 2 holistic wellness home occupation. The parcel's located at 66 Tinker Road in the R1 residential by soils and aquifer conservation districts. Tax map 2C, Lot 56, Case Planning Board 2022-3. It's continued from January 4th and February 1st Planning Board meetings. I have a note from the applicant indicating that she's under the weather and she's asking for a further continuance so that she can be here before us. Didn't ask for a specific date? Robert, are we able to put it on for our next meeting in two weeks or after that?
So, staff's opinion of that is you already have seven items on that agenda, so I would suggest the 15th, which currently has one.
Okay. What's the will of the board?
What was the, what was the, I didn't quite hear what Robert said.
The March 1st meeting is very full, so aim for the March 15th meeting.
March 15th, okay, I'm okay with that.
Someone want to make a motion? Jamie makes the motion. And Barbara's got the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? 7-0-0 for that continuance.
One comment, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, please.
I would like, Robert, to remind the applicant that we still need a plan for this, for this application, a plot plan that shows the location of the buildings, et cetera. Thank you.
The applicant is aware of that, they just have not turned it into staff.
Okay, thank you.
When you communicate as in Nelson's spirit, encourage the applicant to provide the materials to staff in time for an analysis rather than appearing here with the information?
Thank you.
I know that we get what we get, but encourage that. Okay. Item four on our agenda is Brady Sullivan Properties LLC is the applicant and Solon Properties LLC and Innovation Acquisition LLC is the owners. Continued review for consideration of final approval for a site plan to convert a former corporate headquarters building into a 90-unit residential apartment building and associated site improvements. The parcels located at 1 Innovation Way in the I-1 Industrial and Aquifer Conservation Districts. Tax map 2D, Lot 41-15, Case Planning Board 2022-6. And it is continued from our January 18th, 2022 Planning Board meeting. Robert, is there anything that we need to know before we hear from the applicant?
So, this is a second hearing. The board saw much of this and discussed much of the project the last meeting on January 18th. The applicant, I believe, has prepared a bit of a revised plan and wishes to discuss a few items that the board had raised as areas of concern at the last meeting, so I would defer to Mr. Zajak for his presentation.
Thank you, Robert. Tom, good to see you again. Please introduce yourself and tell us where we're at.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chair. Members of the board, for the record, my name is Tom Zajak. I'm a civil engineer with Hayner Swanson, 3 Congress Street in Nashua. Here tonight representing the applicant, Brady Sullivan Properties LLC. With me here tonight is Arthur Sullivan and Chris Lewis from Brady Sullivan Properties, as well as attorney John Cronin from Cronin, Bissin, and Zelinski. We're here tonight seeking final site plan approval for a proposed adaptive reuse of the existing former Brookstone office building located at 1 Innovation Way from an office use into 90 multifamily apartment units along with associated site improvements. As Robert mentioned, we were before the board at your January 18th meeting, at which time we provided a detailed presentation describing the existing site and the proposed project. I wasn't planning on rehashing that information, though I'm certainly happy to revisit any of those items should the board need me to. At that meeting, the board reviewed our, approved our request for a waiver of full site plan review. However, we were asked to provide further information on four main topics, which Robert outlined in the staff report and are listed in detail in my memo dated January 25th, 2022. Those four items being reduction of existing parking and adding green space. Second item related to fire access behind the building. The third item was pedestrian connectivity. And the fourth item was site lighting. So I'd just like to go through a couple of those items now, along with updating the board on additional correspondence with town staff, after which myself and the rest of the team would be happy to answer any questions that you have. So up on the screen is an aerial photo of the existing site as it exists today. There are a couple extra items that I've added here that I'll speak to in a minute. Specifically, the existing patio area that's on the backside of the rear side of the building, as well as there's a natural walking path you can see down in the southwest or lower left-hand corner of the screen. But this was the project, the Brookstone project as it exists today. So the original Brookstone Headquarters Project included 500 parking spaces. 375 of those parking spaces were built. There were also an additional 125 spaces that were future, that were approved but not built, and that was based on the office use in the parking count at the time. Our initial site plan contemplated a change of use with minor improvements, specifically to the proposed, to the existing ADA parking area along with the loading area on the east side or right-hand side of the building. No work was proposed within the remainder of the parking lot. Of course, at the last meeting, the board asked us to consider a reduction of parking spaces in order to break up the sea of pavement and to create more green space on-site. So in response to the comments, we quickly revised the plans after the last meeting and resubmitted, showing the elimination of 123 parking spaces along with associated drive aisles. So it's about one-third of the existing parking spaces that were out there. So we are proposing that 252 parking spaces will remain, which is about 2.8 spaces per unit. You can see on this display here, the green shaded areas are the additional green space that we would be creating. And it's a combination of kind of two things. So in the eastern parking lot, we're really keeping the majority of the spaces there. But we are doing two things. We're adding NCAP islands in two locations on the easterly side of the lot where none exists today. And then we're also substantially expanding, you know, three of the existing NCAPs on the westerly side of the easterly lot where my cursor is here. The bigger reduction of parking occurs on the westerly side. You can see we're really removing two full bays of parking along that side, along with associated drive aisles. In terms of what this area will be in green, the larger area we envision to be just a grass open space area that'll be used for passive recreation. So that's dog walking or putting a picnic blanket out there, you know, playing frisbee. Just an open area of the site that the residents can use. That's outdoors. We do want to keep, I think I mentioned at the last meeting that we had some concerns about removing the curbing and the draining, the drainage. Everything from this parking lot sheet flows along the perimeter of the site where it's captured by catch basins and piped into our drainage system. So what we thought was a somewhat creative solution would be to really saw cut the pavement about 10 feet off of the curb and leave a strip of pavement. It's tough to see in this aerial photo because of the shadows from the tree, but if you follow my cursor, there'll really be a 10-foot wide essentially paved walking path in that location that would serve as a pedestrian loop, but also keep that drainage and curbing intact in those locations. So in total, we'd be removing about 32,000 square feet of green space, which is about 3/4 of an acre, or about 6% of the site would return to open space. So that's the reduction in parking and added green space component. The second item we wanted to talk about was fire access in the sidewalk behind the building. We received a comment from Fire Marshal Manuelli regarding improving emergency access around the existing building as best possible. I'm sure all you folks have been out there, this is an extremely steep slope behind the building. It would be nearly impossible to provide full vehicular access behind the building. But in working with Captain Manuelli and the project's fire protection consultant, we think we've come up with a solution that meets fire department requirements as well as NFPA. So that solution is really to slightly widen vehicular access in this location here on the westerly side. I don't want to speak for Captain Manuelli, but what he conveyed to me is he was really looking for full access on, vehicular access on two sides of the building, which would be provided along Innovation Way on the southerly side, as well as the easterly elevation here. And then what we would do around the back of the building, as I mentioned, there's a paved patio that's accessed just by the building right now. We would install new concrete sidewalks that would sit at the top of the slope. That would complete that pedestrian connection and access point. And that would allow the fire department to access the rear of the building, as well as set up a ladder if they needed to, to access the building on that side. So a stamped letter was submitted by the project's fire protection consultant stating that the proposed access complies with NFPA standards. In his updated memo dated February 7th, the fire marshal confirms that this approach is acceptable. He also notes in that memo that there are additional building-related items that need to be reviewed by the same fire protection consultant, such as life safety, fire protection, fire alarms, and other building systems. But it's our opinion and understanding that these are not site plan-related items. These are building permit, building design-related items that will be addressed at a future time. The next piece I'd like to talk about is pedestrian connectivity. So at the last meeting, the board asked us to look into potential opportunities to improve pedestrian connectivity both on and off-site. So the original Brookstone project included sidewalks along the front of the building here, along with Innovation Way out to Henry Clay Drive. As I mentioned, there's also a natural walking path that was shown and constructed as part of that original project that meanders down the hill from the westerly parking lot. There's a set of wooden stairs here. There's a stormwater basin in this location here. And then the natural path kind of dead ends just short of Manchester Street. The revised plans now include a pedestrian, a full pedestrian loop around the building, as well as a pedestrian loop around the parking lot and the newly created green space, as well as tying into this natural walking path. In terms of what we would connect to off-site, there currently are no sidewalks along Henry Clay Drive. On Manchester Street side, there are sidewalks that exist along the majority of the site frontage that are associated with the He cop Office Park across the street. Those sidewalks are located on the other side of the street and they terminate at either end of the Office Park. It's worth noting that the sidewalk itself sits back about 30 feet from the street. This is likely due to the challenging topography, lack of curbing, and closed drainage in that location and along Manchester Street. The next piece of sidewalk, of course, just to give you an idea, this is approximately where that southerly terminus of the sidewalk ends and it loops back around to the north and then ends on the northerly side of that property. So between the southerly terminus of that sidewalk, the next piece of sidewalk on Manchester Street is located at the Heron Cove, Bowers Landing, Manchester Street intersection, which is over 800 feet away. And we think that further extension of that sidewalk to the south would be extremely challenging, given the topography and the drainage conditions. And because it has to be set back, it may require easements from abutting property owners. Therefore, we believe that the design before you tonight meets the spirit and the intent of the site plan regulations in that we really have limited opportunities to provide further pedestrian connectivity aside from those that exist today and that we are proposing as part of this plan. Last item quickly I want to talk about is site lighting. I know there was some questions towards the tail end of our discussion at the last meeting related to site lighting. And so we did provide some more information in our memo, including a number of photos to give the board an idea of what's out there for lighting. You know, upon review, we think the current site lighting is consistent, you know, with what was approved as part of the Brookstone project in terms of location of poles, fixtures, height of poles. The lighting that's out there today is a combination of light poles, which are located in the parking lot and driveway areas, as well as baller lighting that's adjacent to the building. We're not aware of any regulation requiring different lighting for multifamily use, you know, multifamily residential uses versus commercial uses. I know we discussed that briefly at the last meeting. And then with regards to timing, my understanding is the current system is on a timer set to turn on around 4:30 PM and run through 6:00 AM daily. If you were out there tonight like I was, they've shut down part of the lighting in the parking lot because the building's not in use, but that's typically the hours that would be used for this project. So in summary, there are no changes being proposed to the existing lighting system or the timing that exists out there today. Just to update the board on our communications with staff, we did receive Fire Marshal Manuelli's updated letter dated February 7th, as I referenced earlier. We believe we've addressed the site plan-related items, specifically access to his satisfaction in that the building design team and fire protection consultant will address the remaining comments as a condition of approval. We are in receipt of DPW's review letter dated January 24th. Unfortunately, we received that letter the day after we resubmitted our plans back to you folks in that week of, last week of January. I did have a chance to go through the comments in detail with the DPW director and I'm confident that we can address the comments as a condition of approval. The majority of those comments relate to sewer and some of the minor changes that we'll have to make, specifically the last leg of sewer, that sewer service that connects to the building. DPW is looking for us to upsize that pipe to an eight-inch pipe. It's a six-inch pipe now. We don't think there's a capacity issue either way out there. There's also some, you know, standard items or now standard items that they would look to include in all projects, including a backflow valve preventer and some other items that would help get us tight with current town and state specs. So we're confident we can address those items with DPW. And lastly, I believe it was right after the meeting, the town's peer review consultant issued a letter after their review of the traffic impact memo prepared by the applicant's traffic consultant with regards to trip generation analysis for the project, as well as site distance evaluation. The letter stated they agreed with Mr. Pernod's approach and had no further comment on that analysis. In summary, Mr. Chair, we believe the proposed application is complete and conforms with the applicable site plan regulations. We believe the proposed site is being developed in a responsible manner and is a great opportunity to help the town increase housing stock where it's desperately needed. We've reviewed the staff report and are amenable to the suggested conditions. And at this time, we'd be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Tom, for the presentation, and thank you very much to you and the applicant and your team for the responses to the various comments from last time. Certainly appreciate it. Do members of the board have questions? Nelson?
Thank you. I appreciate what you looked at is, one of my first concerns was the pedestrian access. And this is a residential building that's really stuck in the middle of an industrial area. You know, you're surrounded, where you make your exits, you wind up in industrial area once you exit your site. And that makes it difficult, what you're trying to do. I didn't get a chance to look. You talked about a stairway, and I didn't see that when I was at the site, going off from, yeah, right around in there somewhere. And where does that, does that, that leads into just a wooded path along the road, right?
Yeah, really just dead ends there. I think, I think part of the reason for that path was to provide access down to the stormwater area, as well as lead out to the street, but it's not a paved path or anything that certainly you'd be able to drive a vehicle on.
Yeah, well, I was thinking more of pedestrian uses for it. I'm looking for ways to people, to get people to be able to go somewhere from here by foot. And I had asked you to look at, and I don't know if you did, at exiting some way through the property to the south, or that's, I guess that's the, yeah, that'd be the south.
Yeah, we looked into it. I reviewed their plans to see if there was some sort of trailhead or some sort of pedestrian connection that they had stubbing out to our site. I didn't see anything on their plans or on the photos, the aerial photos that I saw. I'm an engineer, not an attorney, but I think it would be difficult to convince and work through the process of getting an established condominium association to grant an easement to allow us to, you know, connect through their site. And then it would be trying to find a location that would certainly fit there. But there's no, there's no connectivity there on the Bowers Landing parcel. There's no connectivity on Henry Clay. And aside from this little dead-end sidewalk across from the He cop Office Park, there's really no connectivity there. So there's not a lot of great opportunity for us to safely connect into an established system.
I agree there's none now, but I think there's opportunities if they could be agreeable to people. There's a cul-de-sac on the southerly property which has some space between the buildings and it could lead to a pathway. It seemed, it would seem to me, but you didn't look at it, is the basic answer.
We evaluated it on a preliminary basis in terms of looking at their plans, looking to see if there was connectivity. We did not approach the condominium owners about connecting into their property.
Okay, the other thing was, you're going to, I didn't quite get whether you were going to enlarge the sewer in accordance with DPW's request, or you were going to debate that.
Correct. No, we are gonna, the last stick a pipe, so the existing sewer service ties in at Henry Clay Drive. If you follow my cursor, it works its way up Innovation Way and then ties into the building almost at the middle. So the entire sewer line as it exists is eight inches, except for that last piece that services the building. That would be the piece that DPW is asking us to upsize, and we will.
Where is the last piece? I'm sorry.
So there's a sewer manhole right at the front entrance where my cursor is here. And it runs straight into the building here. It's about 60 feet of sewer.
Okay, I didn't quite understand that right off. With regard to the open space, the new green open space, you mentioned that being grass. Is there not opportunities there for more landscaping or some kind of planting? Maybe some trees, maybe some picnic areas, maybe a playground, maybe something, some amenities that would be beneficial to the residents of the area, of the building?
So I think our intent was to kind of keep it an open grassed area, passive recreational area that's flat. There is the patio in the, on the backside of the building that would have amenities for folks in terms of using an outdoor space for patio area. We spoke last time about some of the, you know, amenities that'll be located inside of the building for the residents. But in terms of this area here, I think the idea was to keep it more open, undefined. I think when we talked last time, we had thrown around a couple ideas about leaving some of that pavement, but using it for a basketball court or a tennis court or other paved surfaces. But, you know, I think it's, you know, I don't want to speak for Chris and the rest of the Brady Sullivan team, but, you know, I think that they think that this would be best used as kind of undefined passive, passive rec space on the site.
What about landscaping or trees or something in those islands that are in the parking lot? Those grass islands is, I don't see any landscaping in there.
Yeah, we did not prepare a landscape plan. You know, that was part of our application, original application, was more of a change-of-use project with a, you know, waiver of full site plan. I know we're down the road and talking about a number of these issues. I think they would look at introducing some plantings there, but we don't have a plant, a specific planting plan here before you tonight.
Well, I would think there should be some, because it is a different use and a different kind of amenities that you're trying to create there. I think, well, that and the lighting plan, we didn't see a lighting plan, or I didn't see a lighting plan. Is there a lighting plan that we have left over, a photometric plan, Robert?
Yeah, I believe the applicant did provide the old photometric plan from the prior Brookstone approval in their submitted packet to the board. So you should have that. They did not update that because they were not making any changes to what was there, and what was there is compliant with the regulations. So there was really no need to make any changes to that plan.
And Nelson O'Neil had no problem with that.
We did not ask them to review that as a waiver of full site plan.
Okay, that's all I have right now, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you, Nelson, for your comments. I would just offer one differing opinion that the, as to the green open space, I think that actually having enough space to throw the ball or open up a little bit, or maybe play a game, is desirable. And that sometimes, you know, there's certainly a lot of spaces on the site that does have trees, but actually having a little bit of open space where if you wanted to, you know, play a little football or something, you got at least enough room to do some of those kinds of things. Those are a little bit rarer with apartment complexes to figure out where could you actually, you know, throw a baseball? So I like the relatively left-alone, flat, green, open. But anyway, it's just opinion. Other comments by members of the board?
Just, I appreciate what you're doing with the green open space, but just a curiosity, why did you decide to leave the 27 spaces on that side of the lot on the western half? I'm not sure. If it was a drainage thing, I'm just curious.
This first row here?
Yeah.
I think it was just parking in closer proximity. I mean, we
That's what I figured.
We looked at this six different ways about what spaces we could remove, and there were different goals about, you know, are we keeping all the spaces as close to the building? You know, what are we, what are we trying to get to in terms of a number? I think we settled here because of a combination of a number of things, drainage, curbing, a pathway. It kind of provides a little more connectivity to the existing open land in this location here. That area was, is kind of flatly graded and is also kind of just an open area. That was where the majority of that future parking was going to go, so that's kind of a flat area. So a number of reasons factored into that.
Other comments or questions by members of the board? Barbara?
I have two, Mr. Chair. What I don't see on the plan is where are you putting a sign? I'm sure the building is going to have a a sign? I'm sure the building is going to have a sign that says residences or whatever you're calling the building. Where's that going?
I'm going to ask Chris Lewis to answer that question for you. Just, just to clarify, are you speaking about a project ground sign or any building signage or both?
You know how like when you go to buy Gilbert Crossing, it says Gilbert Crossing.
Yeah. I want to hear from the applicant in terms of what the response to that is, but also note that typically the regulation of those ground signs is outside of our review.
Under the town code?
There's a different approval process for signs that Robert can probably walk us through, but we've never reviewed anybody's signs before except for like tall billboard type signs or something like that.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Chris Lewis, Brady Sullivan. So typically we, in a project like this, we try to get it approved first. We're still going to work through branding of the property, coming up with an attractive name for it. But, but of course, you know, there will be some signage, whether it's replacing the Brookstone sign that's there today and, and, and some kind of upgrades. But it's still to be determined.
Good, thank you so much. Also, we spent a fair amount of time at the last meeting talking about ideas that would make the building look less office building like, you know, again, we were talking about maybe putting some kind of plantings around the building itself, et cetera, maybe changes to the facade. And I'm not seeing anything like that. So I'm taking that to mean that you have no intention of adding any plantings to soften the building front, make it look more residential versus commercial or, or, you know, office building industrial type. Because as I said the last time, we don't want from a town perspective to you to have an empty building. So, and I personally don't want it to look like, you know, garrison or office quarters on a, on a base. So, just the thought. I just didn't know if it wasn't here, but you intended to do something or?
Okay. Yeah, I think we are adding a little landscaping right out in front. I mean, I think the way that we looked at the landscaping piece of it is that, you know, there was a, an approved landscape plan back when, when this project was approved and it's kind of, you know, grown through time to be actually very attractive around the site. And then in terms of the architecture, I mean, we're seeing sort of a shift in how buildings are being used and, and what buildings look like. I think the trends tend to be towards, especially a building of this, this size, this number of units, tend to move away from pitched roofs and, you know, standard sort of residential architectural vernacular. And I think for this particular building, it is really a building that's an object in the landscape and it has its own sort of stark, modern beauty that we think is, is appealing. Maybe not to everybody, but, but we believe it's appealing to many.
Any follow-up questions, Barbara, to that? Any other comments or questions by members of the board?
Yeah, just, the, talking about the access around the building, you have a pedestrian walkway that's going to connect to the patio. You say it's five feet wide, concrete?
Correct.
And that gives the, that gives the fire department enough room to put a ladder up to the third floor or whatnot?
Yes.
How far would you say it sits off the building?
It sits anywhere from 10 feet to about 22 feet off the building.
So you'll have, all right, yeah, like 20 feet out off the building?
That's about as much room as we've got out there before the slope starts dropping off.
On the, on the, let's see, that would be the easterly side, we, Fire Marshal Manuelli was hoping that you could give better access to the side of the building. It looks like so you have like the transformer and generator and it looks at the fire hose connection and all that. So it looks like you'd still only be able to get about halfway back with any kind of fire truck or whatnot. And, and that, that too, that was acceptable, half the side of the building?
Yeah, so that, it's really just a little stub about five or 10 feet. We run out of real estate there. There's some steep topography and you mentioned some of the other utilities and pads on that side. So we're providing enough access that in the opinion of the fire protection consultant and confirmed by Fire Marshal Manuelli that that would meet access, NFPA access requirements along that side.
And it looks like there is a fire hydrant there?
There is, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Nelson, you have a follow-up?
One more, yeah. The cistern, we talked about last time, it's not mentioned again and I don't see it on the plans. It's still there and it stays, stays there? What page are you on? Sorry.
Let's see, in two or four?
Okay, that's the next page. Approximate location of cistern. And that's staying in place?
So there's an, as we understand it, there's an existing thousand gallon cistern located in that, in that spot near the, the generator pad that services the existing fire protection systems. So that entire system, including the, the cistern itself, would need to be evaluated or will be evaluated as the Brady Sullivan team goes through the various building design systems, life safety, fire alarm, and, and confirms that those systems either meet current code or need to be upgraded.
Thank you.
Did you mention a thousand gallons?
Yes.
I'm sure that the consultant will get you into compliance with whatever you need to be, but that's not really going to be a functional part of anybody's plan at a thousand gallons.
Not much water.
Yeah, it's not, not enough to do much. But it is what it is, is if they're compliant and their consultant and the fire department says so. I guess that's the end of my questions on that topic. Comments or questions otherwise?
I'm sorry.
Jamie?
Yes, yes. I just had a question in regarding to the lighting. So the information that I see here, I'm in the package, it just kind of shows the lighting that's in the parking lot and then some at the front of the building. And I was just curious as to what the lighting is, the situation behind the building there.
On the backside of the building? So I don't, I don't believe there's any lighting that's back there now in terms of, there's some bollard lighting in the front of the building. Chris, do you know if there's any wall packs or anything back there in that patio? So there's no physical connection there around the sides of the building? So any lighting would be related to that patio area?
But there will be connections. You're, you're building sidewalks around both sides to get back there.
Correct.
Is there going to be any lighting to walk on the sidewalks with or just whatever comes out the windows? How's that work?
Yeah, we're not proposing any lighting at this time. So the bollard lighting is located in those doorway locations. I don't know if there's any provisions, Chris, to-
Yeah, I think that-
Some thoughts to add some bollard lighting or, or additional wall packs perhaps in those locations, but-
I would agree. I mean, I think that, you know, the, the property is going to be our property that we're going to hold for a long period of time. So obviously, you know, any areas in which there are concerns, when we're complete with the project, we would, we would resolve. When you do go out there at night right now, because there's a lot of glass on the building, there is a fair amount of light that spills out of the building and lights a lot of the, you know, those perimeter spaces around the building. There is additional lighting at each of the, the entrances to the building, including off those two, off the two ends. We're certainly open to adding.
I, I presume whatever's coming out of the windows now may change when that's a resident and they put curtains up or turn their lights off at night. I, I want to make sure that sidewalk is useful to people and they're able to, to use it, I don't know, dog, dog walking or just, you know, moving about the parcel. I don't necessarily feel like I need to hear that answer now, as long as you're committed to addressing it if it comes up. I, I do think that some bollard lighting or something back there, even if it's solar powered, might function pretty well. Obviously, you're going to maintain that in the wintertime and keep it clear and accessible. If that's part of the fire department's access, they're going to insist on that, I assume.
Absolutely.
Since that wouldn't be reachable by a plow or a truck, is there going to be some sort of, I guess just turn it over to whoever your contractor is and say, deal with the sidewalk?
Yeah, it's usually part of the contract, yeah. And we also have onsite, onsite maintenance people during business hours that would take care of any of the things that might get missed.
Okay. And the sidewalk that goes out to Henry Clay is also maintained in the winter?
Yes.
Okay. Comments, questions? Nelson?
Yeah, one more question occurring to me. You, you mentioned the drop off there. Is there a railing on this, the walkway that goes around behind the building? Is there some kind of railing between the edge of the sidewalk and the, the break, the drop off?
None, none that's in the design now. So I think it's referenced in the staff report that we're asking the board to approve this project with this conditional design. We haven't surveyed that back area yet as it exists today. We've been involved in this property for a number of years. We've, we've got the original design. We've done various survey plans, but in terms of the exact grading and layout of that sidewalk, while we've agreed to it conceptually, we haven't crossed that bridge just yet. So if it, if it is too close to the slope, then there would need to be some sort of handrail or some, some sort of fall protection there, depending on where exactly that top of slope falls.
So how would we word a condition of approval that addresses the sort of the contingent, we'll see how it works out approach to that? I'm, I'm glad to support exactly what you're saying. I just need to know exactly how to put it into a condition of approval that we can make sure it gets, gets the loop closed on.
We'd be happy to work with staff on the review and approval of that sidewalk design. Certainly, Fire Marshal Manuelli is going to want to see the final plans as well.
If we put as a condition of approval that DPW needs to sign off on the final sidewalk design and the need for a handrail or not?
Absolutely.
Would that work? Robert, is that within DPW's purview to weigh in on that kind of thing or is that asking too much of them?
They tend to stay with the right-of-way issues. They don't really focus with the sidewalks designs on the site themselves.
Maybe through the building department?
Given the small scope of it, I'm sure that they wouldn't have an issue weighing in.
Okay. Then I think we could deal with either the code official or the DPW?
Yeah, we, we thought it might be somebody from the building department. You know, if you get a retaining wall or something that's over four feet, you've got to have a fence or some sort of rail. Sometimes they, they're the ones reviewing those items. But we're happy to work with, with whoever you feel is appropriate to finalize that design.
I think it's three feet for the retaining wall, but yeah, whatever. Whichever department is appropriate one, maybe as we get to the point of considering a motion, we can narrow that down and whoever's putting words to that. Other comments or questions? Go through the motion of asking, are there any abutters or citizens who wish to weigh in and seeing that there are none, consider the public hearing opened and closed. There are no more waivers to consider requested by the applicant.
Robert. Just one comment that I was kind of noting down, since the board was not definitive on their lighting comments, but it seemed like they wanted something to happen. A suggestion that I have would be some language for a potential condition of approval. Applicant shall add bollard or other lighting as appropriate to illuminate the sidewalk around the building and patio area as deemed acceptable by the community development department.
I like that. Okay. Other comments or questions? Thank you, Robert, for that. If there's none, is anybody willing to make a motion to attend at the final disposition of the application? Paul?
Yeah, I'd like to put forth a motion that the planning board grant final conditional approval to the application with the conditions in Tim's memo, as well as the extra condition that Robert just presented dealing with the lighting in the back.
Dealing with the lighting in the back? And the, the design standard for the sidewalk as well?
Correct.
So can I get some of the language on that one? Because I was writing the other one while you were having that discussion. Sure. I think as to the sidewalk design standards, a condition of approval that the applicant would work with, name the appropriate town agency to achieve a satisfactory design of the sidewalk-
Illumination and safety of the sidewalk.
As it relates to a handrail or whatever's necessary for the safety of the pedestrians. And which agency do we want to have in that fill in the blank? The code building official or the DPW?
Appropriate town department will work.
Appropriate town department will specify, okay. Is, is there a second for Paul's motion?
I'll second.
Brian seconds it. Discussion? If there's no discussion, then all in favor say aye? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No opposed.
One opposed? Is there any, anybody abstaining? All right, so that is six to one for the approval with Nelson Disco voting against. Thank you very much for the presentation.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Okay, item five on our agenda is Powell Realty of Merrimack as the applicant and Thomas K. Powell as the owner. Review for acceptance and consideration of final approval for a waiver of full site plan review to allow a caretaker accessory dwelling unit within an existing restaurant. The parcel is located at 595 Daniel Webster Highway in the C1 Limited Commercial Elderly Housing Overlay and Oxford Conservation Districts and Wellhead Protection Area. Tax map 6D1, Lot 41, Case Planning Board 2022-10. The applicant has requested that this item be continued to the March 1, 2022 meeting. I asked, what's, what's the will of the board? But this actually, this request is almost simple enough to vote on without a presentation, but I guess we continue it, right?
I'd move to continue it to the 15th.
To the, to March 15th instead of March 1?
Yeah.
March 15th is our second?
Second. Were you counting that in the count prior that you said, Robert?
Give me one second, I can confirm that. Yes, we were factoring that in.
And that's seven agenda items?
One, two, three, four, five, six. Yes. Three, I will say three of them are home occupations.
Let me also offer up as to the consideration of the March 1st meeting is, I intend to be out of town that day and not that that matters, but it's your, it's your meeting, buddy.
No, it doesn't matter, Paul. Of course not.
So there's a motion to, to continue it to the 15th and maker of the motion can amend that to the first or we could ask for a second on the 15th. What do you guys think? Is there a second for the motion to continue to the 15th?
I'll second it.
Second by Nelson. All right, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? All right, seven, zero, zero to move it to the 15th.
15th of March, huh?
Yeah, 15th of March.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
May, may I ask, what brought this to light for, for that?
The fact that there's an apartment over Tortilla Flats? Just that?
Just that? Like, did somebody?
It's apparently been there for a while and nobody's really knew about it. And so now it's in use and come the light and let's get it cleaned up.
Yeah. Okay, so scary.
Apparently, the owner uses it very sparsely and, but it's there and it's a residential on a commercial site, so.
Yeah.
And I guess mu- much beyond that, we should probably wait till we have the applicant here to respond any details on it. So, discussion, possible action regarding other items of concern?
If I could, as a request from staff quickly, I know it's kind of burdensome and we kind of get lost in your regular lives and email shuffles, but if we could, if you guys can respond somewhat quickly, if you can, to our attendance emails, it would help us out. We're trying to, basically the point of that is to try to sort out how, if we have a quorum and what those chances are. It was coming towards probably early afternoon today. We weren't sure that we had a quorum for this, this meeting. So if we could try to get to it, and, and again, I know it's, it's hard and we get lost and you've got other things going on, but any, any help you guys could give us, we'd appreciate it on that.
Thank you, Robert, for that request. And again, the only thing I would add to that is if the emails are landing in your work or your home or wherever it doesn't work for you, give them an updated address and make sure you're getting it in the place that you can respond to quickly and otherwise. Robert, I never respond to it because you already know what I'm doing, but. Okay, any other discussion items? Neil, I saw you preparing.
Well, it's just more of like a comment, I guess. And I, I'm going to probably look into it after, I guess, not looking to do anything with it, I suppose, but the 360 mall, you know, when they redid it and put a couple more buildings in there, I'm curious if we talked about snow storage and snow removal. Because I went in there the other night and you, you turn in and you come to a huge iceberg and it, it takes up like almost- up like almost three and a half lanes of, of parking and that right away takes away from the, the parking calculation. And as we all know, we've seen that place completely full of cars. And so now it's just like, I'm curious, I guess we can go down and just look and see where they're supposed to put this snow storage or if it was supposed to be trucked out or something like that?
I suspect it would not be allowed to be where you're saying it is, uh, because of the fact that they were granted a parking waiver. I suspect that they would've had to remove any excess snow that they could not store on the site without blocking parking.
Yeah, it is certainly blocking parking. It, it, it actually blocks the end, uh, drive although you can pull all the way in alongside the parking and it's completely, you can't get there.
Then that certainly would violate the plan.
Yeah. And, uh, I don't even know how trucks are getting around the building actually coming out, you know, on that far side just because it's so, you know, mounted up, but just wanted to bring that to light.
Thank you for bringing it to light. I know we didn't decide or take any action on that, but, um, because it's a client, I always wanna make sure that I'm making it clear, I'm not part of that discussion, whatever that is that we just did.
Okay. Right, what are we? I just, you know, just noticed there's an awful lot of snow in the parking lot, taking up parking spaces.
Okay. Other items of concern? If not, then there is on our agenda, the approval of the minutes of February 1, 2022. What is the will of the board?
Move to accept, Mr. Chairman.
Is there a second? Some motion and a second to approve the minutes of February 1st as written. Uh, is there a discussion? If not, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? One abstained, two abstains. Um, Paul and Neil abstained. So, that is, um, let's see, 5:02 to approve the minutes. Um, that brings us to a potential motion to adjourn if there is one. Some motions are second, second by Nelson. Um, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Seven, zero, zero, we're adjourned. Thank you all very much. And don't forget to turn the microphones off.